Good afternoon, this is the Athens Planning Commission. It is October 3rd, 2012. It's a little bit after 12 o'clock PM. We're having a regular meeting. We have a quorum with three members present. Anybody who wishes to speak? We would like to administer an oath. Sir, would you swear or affirm to tell the truth?
Yes.
Good, great. Next is disposition of minutes. We have minutes here from the last meeting, which we had everybody here. That was the minutes of September 19th, 2012. I looked at them. Okay, I would move that we approve the minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on this? No? We're all happy? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? No. Okay. Cases, we have a case at 1211. This is Athens Healthcare at 70 Columbus Circle. It's a lot split. It's a minor lot split. We have received the application for a minor lot subdivision or lot split. The applicant is Gary Hanson. This represents a split off of Columbus Circle Road, the developed portion of Laurel's away from the undeveloped portion. If I look at it correctly, again, you see the application here. I think the only thing that was questionable was the width-to-deep ratio was looked at as, it did not check off easily, but it looks like it covers it. In terms of the floodplain area, the Lo Mart has been completed, the utility easements that the city has and various entities are in place.
Mayor, because...
Go ahead.
There are, there's a few things there. Mr. Hanson met with me and John Vasky and Andy Stone probably about six months ago, maybe nine months ago, to discuss this lot, this project or this request. Initially, they showed us a different request, which we had concerns about because their request would have excluded the Laurel's entirely from any responsibility towards the maintenance of that ponding area with respect to the letter of map removal from FEMA. We had, there's five requirements that we had concerns about, one of which is that FEMA had not signed off on that letter of map revision yet or removal yet. It also didn't show any easements of access for new utilities and new, for an access lane to the site that is not developed. We also wanted to make sure that that retention pond remained on-site with the Laurel's and the head wall. So we gave that list to Mr. Hanson of all those concerns we had, and he came back with, or Jeff Maiden, his surveyor, came back with a new survey and a new request that showed all of those issues being met.
Okay.
Because there's easements of access for utilities, that does require that the Planning Commission can only make a recommendation to City Council, and then we have to forward, if the Planning Commission thinks that this is a worthwhile lot split to award, then we have to forward that to City Council so City Council can award an easement, a variance from our subdivision rate.
Okay.
But from our review perspective, all of the issues that we had were met.
Okay, so what you're saying, because of the variance portion of it, it has to go to council?
Right.
Okay.
Planning Commission can only recommend that City Council award the variance and approve the request.
Okay.
When you have an easement of access, a new easement being created.
And Paul, I believe I was told that the variance for the 1 to 3 ratio was no longer applicable because of the size.
Yeah, John said because it's greater, each new lot is greater than five acres, the 1 to 3 or the 3 to 1 ratio is not applicable.
That's because...
Easements of access for utilities and for driveways, it doesn't, that always kicks in the subdivision requirement, even if they're all 100 acre lots.
Okay, I see. Okay, anything you wish to add?
No, sir.
Okay. Any other questions or discussions? What do you think?
I'm a little baffled, so I guess I better ask for some clarification. How are they, the maps aren't really very clear. How are they accessing this lot?
Portion number two?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
The one they're splitting off.
Splitting off is the Laurel's part. They're taking this away from this. So in other words, they're taking the 20 acres away from the total 50. The 20.028, 29 is, I believe, this is where everything's developed. So Paul was saying that the retention ponds, which are over here, have their...
Well, that part is fine, that's clear, but how are they going to get there?
This would probably be Columbus Circle Road here.
That'd be Columbus Road proper.
Yeah.
Looking at the survey.
Mm-hmm.
Look at the survey.
I don't think the survey's that clear, man.
This, there's an easement of access right here for both utilities and for driveway.
To go back here?
Yes.
She's talking about the...
Goes all the way to right there.
And so they're going to put a road up parallel to the Columbus Circle道?
There's not going to be put any road there. It'll have the frontage on Columbus, Columbus Road and Columbus Circle.
I don't really like lot splits that are like, anyway.
Why is it 30 feet as opposed to 50 feet?
I do.
What, the road width?
If this is an access easement.
Because they'd be in the rooms at the Laurel's otherwise, wouldn't they?
But it would serve more than one property, unless something...
Yeah, I guess, I don't know. But what are the intentions here?
I can't hear much, Paula.
Could somebody give me a thumbnail on what the intentions are here? Is this where they're going to build those senior housing?
He said, actually before the meeting, I was asking if there were plans in this. He says there's no plans on this. Really, the main reason we parcel this is that this will make it undeveloped and this will make it developed. So the idea is to split up, so you're not paying taxes on the entire development.
Oh, it's a tax thing.
Oh, yeah.
Although, I will share with you that we've been told that this is done countywide. If you have the farm, as it were, the farm and immediate surroundings are separated out from the agricultural value.
Sometimes with a fancy, huh?
I think we've done this at, didn't we do this at one time at University of States? Not us as a planning commission, but...
Who knows?
They split off the developed versus the undeveloped. I think I've seen, I've seen this before, but I don't remember where.
So what's the zoning on this new lot?
All that zoning is...
Looks like it's R3.
R3.
Ever get...
Am I correct?
Oh, yeah, I think so. I mean, if you don't know, who would?
It's brown.
It's brown.
Wonder if it's the red in the front.
Yeah.
It's a red up the hill there.
Is it all red? Goes over to the river.
Split zoning on the current lot, so these probably would be portion of R3 and portion of B3.
B3 by the river.
It's pretty steep.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Right.
There's one bench there from the old inter-city trolley.
Yeah, we've been down with that before, haven't we?
Yeah.
I don't know.
You have other questions?
I have concerns, I'm not sure if I'm articulate.
The utility easement for the existing utilities?
Future?
Or for future? I would assume it's for existing.
There's, I believe it's for the existing, and it's also that utility easement that we had to put in for the city's request to take the utilities back to that piece of property.
Yes, there is every development in here.
Yeah, fully developed, expect to see a map on this in two months.
No, I don't think so.
You don't think so? Yeah. I've just been around long enough, I'm jaded.
Hmm.
So if the 30 feet is just for a singular parcel, then that would be within what we, our normal parameters, access. Where's our pump station again?
Pump station? Oh, that would be further down.
Further down.
It's probably somewhere over here, isn't it?
I wonder why you're not showing the pump station on here? The wonderful sinking pump station.
Okay.
Not your, not NIMTOF, not your administrative.
Okay, it's essentially, okay, if you look, this is, Ginger's right here.
Uh-huh.
Okay, so the access to get into here is somewhere over here, so the pump station's somewhere over in this ridge.
Does the easement require that they keep that pump station there?
I think we're keeping the pump station there anyway. I didn't hear anything to move it.
Without you asking.
Well, that's something different.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, so this...
It's kind of a, you know, brick kind of thing. Okay.
I guess I would say if there are future developments, they'd be back before us for review.
That's why I say I fully expect to see them. Yes, they're...
I don't know, that's pretty steep here.
It is pretty steep.
Oh, yeah.
I keep looking at it.
You mean, we don't ever develop anything steep, right?
Oh, we do all the time.
Okay, just to make sure we're all on the same page.
But then there's other things that would happen too, to kick in that, I mean, hillside developments.
So where's the access road to the ridges on here?
The river?
The rid, not the ridges, the Laurel's.
It's got to be, oh, you want a road.
Yeah, I mean, it's not showing up anywhere. Is it platted or what?
Okay, if we look at this one right here, this is...
No, I know people drive on that, but I wonder why it's on this...
You're not talking about Columbus Circle, are you?
Yeah, but doesn't it have to have a driveway shown that if they're going to be sharing it or not?
No, why would they be sharing it?
Well, I don't know. Are they going to be going off from it, or are they both going to empty onto Columbus Circle?
Right now, they both, okay, the undeveloped part would be emptying onto Columbus Circle, but it also has frontage on Columbus Road.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
Right.
But, you know, again, okay, if you look at this map here, this looks like the actual driveway in there. This little divot right here could actually be the pump station, looking at the little white spot right there. Okay, so this drops off pretty quickly.
All right, this is one area of building, a road, and a pump station there.
And so, okay, if we look at this map, this puts it somewhere in front of the both axes right here, so this is how everybody gets into the Laurel's right now, somewhere over here.
Across their easement.
Well, this is a, this is our utility easement right there.
So we own it at the surface as well?
No, we'll just have utility easement on it. Why would we own it?
I don't know.
Below up of it?
Well, it's just...
Did you just do that while you were sitting there?
No.
I'm just using, I'm sorry.
Okay, so...
This is the drive, I believe.
It looks, I thought this was the drive.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's it, correct me.
Yeah.
This is where the lift station is.
Yeah.
Don't write on that picture.
It's already written on there. Easement, Russell.
So, and show me again where the, this is the entrance right up here?
That's what it looks like, yeah.
Yeah.
Usually come in on that side of the entrance, the...
I haven't had the pleasure, but I was going to go this afternoon, so.
Oh, okay, yeah. You should go.
Into it, I've seen the road, I just haven't seen their driveway.
Oh, it's easy to get to. They have to haul everything in there, if you remember, just, you know. Any business, nursing or business, these food and...
Pampers and all that other stuff. This is the road, Columbus Circle right here, right?
Hmm, yeah, I think it is, actually under construction. Yes, that's that house.
Right.
This is the second house, these, you're going into the other area over there.
Yeah.
These would be, if you look at the lots here, these are the individual lots. So this would be where the dentist is, right?
Mm-hmm, I think you're right, because that's his properties right across the street from him.
Yeah, okay.
And you put it in ourselves, it's even better. This is a pond, one of them.
Oh, no, the retention pond's further over, I believe. But it does fill up with water, yeah, that's retention pond, that's, this green is actually algae.
That's what it looks like to me, so...
Yeah, it is. We got, we got one big retention pond, this is the main one here, where it drains in. This one's just low because it scooped all the dirt out.
Okay.
It would have to come in front of us again for development.
That's good.
And he'll have to go through this and council to actually approve it. Okay.
I guess, Paul, you're the one who did actually put a little question mark here on the review that said, is this new lot developable? And I'm curious as to...
Right, and it is. I wrote that, and once I started looking at it, based on the potential for a Phase 2 or something like that, and what was proposed years ago, and the fact that it has driveway and utility easements, I don't have that concern. It would have to be engineered. You know, if you're doing anything on that slope, there's land development issues that would have to be addressed, and it might not be the best spot, but my initial concern was that we were creating an undevelopable site that nobody was going to have any responsibility for if something should happen to that pond and to that head wall. And because those are remaining with the Laurel's site, that concern was addressed. I was just, we kept saying, everything was being, all of the letter of map removal, the whole purpose of that entire process was to get the current site built, and if that site had no responsibility, should something fail, who would we actually be working with? And we just kind of scratched our heads and said, you know, we don't know who, like, who would we contact in an emergency if something happened? But because of Laurel's, it's now part of that same parcel, we were confident that we would have obvious people we could deal with to address situations, or somebody we could violate if there was a violation that occurred.
Okay. Remind me, when hillside ordinance is kicking in at five acres or two, do you remember? Or over an acre?
Yeah, it should kick in.
Over an acre?
I believe on anything, over an acre, yeah.
Okay, so...
Probably less, yeah.
I would say, if you, it depends how you read it, but it's been...
Land development ordinance should, should kick in on anything that's on, depends on the soils type.
Yeah, okay, so...
I believe is the primary issue.
So we will have oversight on that.
Yeah, oh, certainly.
That was one of your concerns, is whether, you know, you're worried about whether it's developable, but the other said whether it's done correctly in the future.
Right. I can't find anything in our subdivision regulations from my skimming right now that has any standard for a private access easement, for what size it should be.
I thought we'd adopted the counties, that was 30 feet for one...
County is 30, right.
And 50 for greater than one with the maintenance agreement in place.
That I'm not sure, Paula. It does say 30 feet is the requirement for a utility easement though, which is what they have here.
They might need it though for the, if they have water and sewer, you know, given the EPA regs on separation.
Right.
That's why 50, oh, well. It's got the best of Athens, it's got the flood and the slope. They could call it best of Athens.
Everything that makes Athens Athens.
Yep, nothing in between.
So is this still on the...
Yeah. I just say, yeah.
Columbus.
Columbus Circle, yes. Okay, I would make a motion to recommend this to be approved by council. Which means there's another shot at it.
We've got all the top ones. So I'll probably second it just to get it on the table, but I would like to know that the line that I see on this map doesn't correspond to this map.
Well, that's an easement, that's...
Yeah, I know, but it's, but, you know, like, this part is on this property and that part is on the other property, and it doesn't show up. There's a flaw on this map.
Well, if there's, no, I would say the survey map's probably accurate. I would probably say the GIS map is probably the one you've got to question. I mean, I've looked at, I mean, if you look, this house is right in the middle of the lot. Now, that's always possible, we've seen that.
That's Athens.
That's Athens. But that's, that's it. A lot of these things, you know, I think you're actually with all the GIS sites, there's usually a disclaimer in terms of accuracy. So I would not, if I was going to trust the one with the, either map, I'd say I'd trust the one that says State of Ohio Professional Surveyor versus the GIS, which is, you know, composite between, you know, Google Earth and a bunch of parcel lines that somebody drew in there.
Yeah, so this is, yeah, this is not clean, but I guess it's all on the Laurel's.
It is.
I don't know.
Okay, realize what we're talking about is splitting two different lots.
I know, it's an easement, I don't remember that, yeah.
It is an easement, but also recognize the fact that, you know, if we, if we look at this and say, okay, we've got 30 foot on this side, but this portion is also owned by the same person. Not that it'll always be owned by the same person, but whoever comes along, they will have, there's a 30-foot easement that's in the Laurel's side, but we can always negotiate another 30 foot or 20 feet, whatever you need, on the other side with the person who wants to use it.
And if you, okay, Paul, so continuing on, if you look at it, could you hypothetically...
Which Paul?
You.
Me? Okay.
Since we're talking about disagree. I was just continuing on from your statement. So could you imagine a road that would be, a road that wouldn't have too much slope that would come right along the edge of that easement and then around the edge of the Laurel's?
Um...
To get out and open that area?
Not easily, because I think it actually drops off pretty quickly there. I'm trying to remember what I was looking at there.
Well, trees in this area probably need...
There's a bench there.
Yeah, I know about the bench, you could knock that down, Paul.
Well, you'd have to come off the bench. I think you'd follow the road until you get to the bench, and then you'd have to come down the bench.
Slip around, yeah.
So that would actually take you away from the easement at that point.
I'm just looking at potential hidden agendas, you know?
Well, we could always ask, we, time's wearing off, any hidden agendas we should know about? Okay.
For this year?
For this year.
For five years?
Nothing in the works.
Okay, because I remembered hearing about them.
I know, there was discussion of, but again, it depends on what the market is hearing and what happens in the future. I made the motion.
I seconded it.
Okay, there we go. Any more discussion, shall we vote on it? And this is a recommendation to carry to council.
Our next recommendation is approving this with the utility access easement, that's the final piece.
Hmm.
So are there any specific changes or notations that we need to put in this motion?
I don't know. Do you have any recommendations?
They're mostly just empty, but I was thinking that should any development occur, that they will definitely follow the subdivision, I mean, the hillside...
Well, to get in, they'll have to put a road or a driveway.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's my only concern is this, this access, it's one thing if it's listed as a utility, but if it's also an access.
It says access road, doesn't it?
Sort of multiple properties.
Yep. It says access and utility easement, doesn't just say utility easement.
But I don't know what they can attach.
I mean...
The governor's office.
Yeah. Would you definitely, yeah, I was just definitely want to make sure that should anything happen, that the hillside ordinance will be used. I mean, it's...
All city codes would have to be, sure.
Well, you know, I've been here long enough to...
I mean, it's a new lot. It's a new lot, it's no different than any other lot, it's gonna, it has to...
After this, I will mention a couple of places where it was...
Fair enough.
Okay.
But yes.
It starts with an N, S and N's with it.
It's a, to me, it's a given that all zoning, subdivision, land development, floodplain, any others, relevant city codes, shade tree, et cetera, those are all going to have to be... At the time of an application, you have to conform to the code as it exists at that time.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor of approving the recommended motion?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Okay, so motion's approved, it will be forwarded to council. Good enough? Okay. Communications, we have, any communications?
We have a letter from Integrated Services.
Yes, I received this from Integrated Services, 27th. Essentially, let's see, the gist of it is that there are concerns about the changing of the zoning. I believe, I believe there was a copy forwarded to the, I say, oh, yeah, Jim Sands, Christine Fall, Al Swank, so this president of council, fourth ward representative, as well as the Far East Side Neighborhood Association. One, I can read it?
Yeah.
Yes? Nah? Okay, I think really the...
Our ship is sailed, right?
Our ship is sailed, yes. And I think really what the gist of it is that they would like more discussion before the parcel would change from R2 to R1. It's really not clear on that, but I think the gist of it was, let's have more conversation before we move forward. I think this is something that, I'm glad the council is aware of it, because they will be the next step on that. Anything else, communication-wise? Nope. Okay, next report from the C Planner and Director of Code Enforcement, if he's around. Go ahead.
Relating to the Far East Side rezoning, I have been fielding a few phone calls from people who were asking the same thing, or were, lived in that zone and were concerned about that rezoning change, but I recommended that they address that with City Council as it comes before them. I believe council's placed it on the agenda for the second committee meeting in October.
I believe you're on the first for the historic preservation?
Yes, I'll be speaking next week with council on a historic preservation ordinance. I'll be giving them a brief presentation on a recommended chapter to create for historic preservation.
Okay.
Last week, or maybe that was two weeks ago already, I did attend the Ohio-Kentucky-Indiana Conference of the American Planning Association in Columbus. There was a lot of worthwhile workshops that I sat in on. There were a few that focused on neighborhood revitalization that I thought were worthwhile and gave some good ideas that we could, if we wanted to move forward with some ideas with our neighborhoods that we could propose, that addressed some of the other things, that maybe some efforts that the city can do besides just looking at the code enforcement issues, some investments that we could make. So there's some good conversations I think we can have in the future on that. There was also some good ways on how to integrate arts into our community and the benefits of having public arts in your community, also some of the risks of having public art if it's not done well. If you have bad public art, it's worse than no public art, I suppose. And there were some, also some good presentations on tax increment financing and just creating community improvement districts where property owners agree to tax themselves to create a pool of money to do reinvestments in their, in their community. Those can be applied both at the neighborhood level for residential areas as well as for commercial districts, but in Ohio, they're typically done in commercial districts. Some very good educational things there.
I know that Jim Sands called for a task force, ad hoc committee for the outside, the sewer system outside the city.
Yes.
I think you're one of the number, you were named as one of the people to be involved.
No problem.
I guess the only... What?
Another meeting.
Another meeting, yes. If you have any information in terms of agreements out there, I'm trying to scour what I have in my files, as well as, I think Andy has some, I'm sure the county commissioners have some, of what an agreement would look like, so we have a resource, so to speak.
I do have a few I can, I can print out and put together, yeah.
And do we have any clean maps of the rezoning that we could put on the city website, perhaps, for answering those questions? We did, I think...
The rezoning?
The Far East Side, I just jumped on.
Yeah, I actually just made a new one for the clerk of council yesterday to get to the council members. It only shows, it takes away everything as far as zoning issues but for the parcels that will be changed, and has an ortho photo underneath and the name of the property owners. It's not perfect, because I tried to make it for eight and a half by 11 so that Debbie It's not perfect, because I tried to make it for eight and a half by 11, so that, that you can print them out easily. But yeah, I can put those up on the, I can put a few new ones up there if you'd like.
It may slow down some of the questions, that's what I'm thinking.
Sure.
Continuing on in that, when you go, could you possibly consider going to council and discussing non-conformities? Because there were a lot of erroneous things said last time, I thought. You know, the idea of what a non-conformity is and how it operates. I mean, I own a non-conforming structure and I'm not in the least threatened by it.
I might defer to our code director on that.
Well, I don't know who should go, but somebody should be there. I mean, I know that the people who were the, the laypeople on this board didn't quite understand what non-conformity was, in my opinion.
I, I could do that, and I too can echo Paul, I've received a numerous amount of phone calls in regards to this as well. And the biggest part is the possibility of their non-conformity being substantially ruined through fire or whatever, if they were flooded, would they be able to rebuild? And that's their biggest concern. Depending on the percentage, the answer could potentially be no, so, without variances, so...
And I guess that what you, I would ask you to do, John, is say, have we ever deprived anyone who was a non-conformity in this city in the last 40 years of the chance to rebuild? And I think the answer is never.
Probably not.
I mean, there were some that were really stretched and they still were allowed to rebuild. Now, and that's through a multitude of different approaches and value, ways to value things. The loose and the tight.
Right.
Same result.
Okay.
It's a boogeyman.
Yep.
Dispel the boogeyman.
I, I live also in a non-conforming house, so I'm aware of the, the implications of that, I mean, so...
Which are almost non-existent.
Anything else, Paul?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
John?
Which therefore I can lead into the BZA meeting next Tuesday evening. We only have one case on the agenda, and that is, for just what we discussed, it's the Seven South High, a structure that caught fire, had substantial damage. It is a non-conforming structure by way of parking, so therefore they need to go to the BZA to get a variance for rebuilding that, basically third floor the way they are doing so right now, so...
But that's not an increase in the occupancy or footprint?
It is a increase in the cubi content and the change of the roof line, so therefore, that's the reason they have to go before the BZA to get a variance for their parking. They currently have zero parking spaces for six beds.
And at the end, you'll still have six beds, is that right, John?
That's gonna be decided at the meeting and how they want to pursue that, because if they decide to keep it at six, they will have to go to obtain permits from the State of Ohio, because it's considered a rooming house and the state may require them to put fire suppression in it, so on and so forth. So if they decide to opt out of that venture and reduce it to five, then that's, that's up to them, how they want to pursue.
Oh, so it's never more, it's not more, it's less?
It's five or less, yes.
Okay. Anything else?
That is it.
Okay, and I forward you the new alternate, alternate BZA person, okay.
Yes.
I'll try swearing him in before Tuesday, so he gets a taste of the BZA.
And I've got him coming in to meet me or go over some stuff, either Thursday or Friday, I gotta get back with him. How's he pronounce his last name?
I think it's Rab, isn't it?
Is it Rab?
We were wondering about that.
Okay, well, I'll find out. Is it Thomas Rab or Rabey or Rab?
No, I think it's Rab.
Rab, okay.
I may be wrong on that. I have trouble pronouncing As once in a while, depending if it's long or short. Okay, thanks.
Mayor, I do have one other thing, I apologize. Councilwoman Chris Falls is in the process of assembling the newly created Environmental and Sustainability Commission. I believe I'm serving on that commission as the mayor's appointee.
Okay.
That's what Councilwoman Fall thought. I don't think that was ever stated, I, I told her that was fine, but unless you have a concern about that or you want to serve on it as, instead of an appointee, or you had somebody else in mind, but...
If you, if you don't mind?
I do not mind at all, that's fine.
Just keep me informed of what's going on, that's all.
Sure. We were trying to get a graduate student from the Ohio University Office of Sustainability. She expressed some interest in it, and I believe all the other spots were filled, so... She's trying to get a meeting set up in the next two weeks, at least an initial meeting, just for introductions and then to set some ground rules with who will be the chair, et cetera, and when we'll have our regular meeting.
Okay. If I understand, the comprehensive plan review advisory commission is pretty much not doing anything right now?
Dormant.
Dormant, okay. Just wondering.
Sleeping.
Leave it to review and requesting implementation.
Yes, I understand that, which means...
This was a big, this was a big part of the implementation, with so, so many of the issues did relate to environmental and sustainability concepts.
And historical preservation.
And historic preservation, right. Those are a few of the bigger ones that really the advisory commission thought needed to be implemented, so...
And I know we had a discussion about neighborhood gateways and arts, which is what you brought up just at the planning conference. Okay, anything else? No?
No, sir.
Okay, and let's see, opportunity for citizens to speak on items not covering agenda. Probably not, since nobody's here. Announcement on the business, our next meeting will be Thursday, we're changing it from Wednesday to Thursdays, October 15th. I assume at noon, right? It's not on the agenda, right? Noon clock, 12 o'clock, okay. This is to accommodate the, the members who couldn't make it today. Any other business? Motion to adjourn? Okay, we're adjourned.